Welcome back. We appreciate your patience as we do our board business. At this time, we need to know how we're doing our pledge of allegiance. The school out, do we have any students? Yes? No, if she's willing to do that, we would love to have that. Thank you.
This is as close to second grade as we're going to get.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for taking on that responsibility for us. We appreciate that. Okay, I need a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
Madam President, I move the board adopt the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second? Dr. Schumacher, any questions or comments for the agenda? A vote please.
Vote is open. Thank you. All votes are in. The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, I am... Mr. Cowan, could you like straighten up my screen for me?
Sure.
You're all set?
We don't have any school highlights, but is there anything you'd like to share?
We really don't have school highlights, but we do have Father's Day highlights. So happy Father's Day. We know since we gave for the mothers flowers that you do each have a little sonic card. We think as fathers you might be a little bit more desiring of a sloppy sandwich or a large drink. So we have put a little sonic card and you have a Father's Day card in there. And then you have a pretty cool little pin set that has pins in it and a little stand and whatever. You have to read it to see how it works, but it also sits other things. So happy Father's Day you all. One, because you're on video, but also because the role that you carry, you're role models to fathers across the county and we appreciate you. That's it.
Thank you. Happy Father's Day to all of you. I have any questions for our public address tonight?
We do not have any public speakers, Madam President.
Thank you. So then I need a motion for business by consent.
Madam President, I move the board approve the items of business by consent as presented and authorize the board president or superintendent to sign the special project and purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the board.
Do I have a second? We have a second, but I didn't catch the hand, but we'll go with Ms. Schmidt.
I think she was first. The vote is open. All votes are in and the motion carries unanimously.
Dr. Anderson, do you have a report for us on the superintendent's report?
Of having Mr. Jim Edwards here who's our lobbyist. So he'll be coming forward to the microphone to share with you the legislative session and the things that impact public schools. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Edwards.
I need to stand. I've been sitting at a board meeting all afternoon. Thank you. January 5th was last time I was here to meet with the board as a whole and that was the evening that Superintendent Anderson introduced me to the board as lobbyist. And I have to say that even though the session was stressful at times, which it was, you all read the newspaper. Overall, it was great and really we probably came out better than I had anticipated throughout the session and especially towards the end with the passage of Senate Bill 113 as well as the governor's handling of line items within there. But another thing that was great for me in this session was I had lobbied for two statewide organizations over 30 years. And with that came along the idea that I really lobbied 165 people. I also learned during that process that people in Wichita really didn't care what people in Tika cared about. People in Syracuse didn't really care about what people in Parsons care about. I should say not people, legislators from those areas. So my lobbying base really shrunk from 165 to around a dozen individuals and those were the Shawnee County legislators. So that was good. And the individuals that I'd worked with, some for a very long time in the legislature as far as education lobbyists are still there. And so I was able to work with them. And that was an enjoyable part. Session ended early, which was really an enjoyable part. It ended on April 29th when they not only passed their final bill, but they also went signee die, which meant that was the end of the session. They said, we aren't coming back. That's not a normal procedure for them. I think that was probably maybe the second time that had happened in my 30-plus year career. The biggest surprise that I had was the evening that we met here. I went home and I told my wife, I said, okay, I'm ready to go. And she said, what are you going to wear? When I retired in 2012, I said I wasn't going back. And so I got rid of every suit I owned. I kept two. And I don't know what happened, but there must be something with moisture because they shrunk hanging in the closet for that 10-year period. So anyway, those were some of the highlights that I wanted to bring up. So if we can have on the screen, I believe you all have in front of you a list of items and I think all of you probably remember this item, which you passed, I believe, one of your December board meetings. And that was a culmination of visits between the other districts in Shawnee County as well as Tika UST 501. But I want to go through and I actually just took But I want to go through, and I actually just took the items that were listed and list them in that order on that priority listing of United, One United Voice, and that's what I'll work from tonight. First one was ensuring all students have the opportunity to succeed. Schools supported by public funds, you've got it in front of you. I won't read all of it. We oppose school choice. We had plenty of opportunity to do that this year. There were more school choice under the guise of student tax, or tax credits. And they never called them vouchers, which in reality, that's what it came back to. But anyway, those, we had plenty of opportunity to do those. As the issue of vouchers, as some legislators call them educational savings accounts or tuition tax credits, both which would have drawn money from the state general fund, which is the same place that education, public education, K through 12 public education draws their funds from. With the passage of Senate Bill 113, or House substitute for Senate Bill 113, we were insured or assured that future funding for K through 12 education would be provided and would meet the Supreme Court's latest decision. The increase and there were some, some negative parts that were in that. One of them was the increase in tax credit contributions for scholarship programs. If you've read the news nationally, that was, that was an issue that every state was looking at, was how do, how do we direct public funds to private schools? Quite honestly, it's going to be there probably more so next year than, than this year, but it's, it's not gonna, it's not gonna leave. They did not deal with special ed, and I'll talk about that a little later. But the eligibility for tax credits was, was also increased. As you remember, or recall, Senate Bill 113 was passed. They called it on both the House and Senate floor during general debate. They called it the K through 12 public education funding bill or budget bill. That didn't help them at all because constitutionally, the governor has the authority to line item budget bills. So as soon as they did that, all of the other, all the other issues that they tossed in that bill were fair game if they dealt with finances. And I'll talk about this one a little later, but the governor saved some small school district legislators some, a lot of headaches because the district, there were approximately 100 districts across the state that would have lost funding because of when they had to have their student counts. And because of that, and we probably, I think USC 501 had some small decrease in student population. Probably would have had some there, but when you have a school district that might have 100 students, it's harder to absorb those costs. And so by her taking, she, she line item vetoed that, and there were several other items. But as I said, while the provisions of the bill chipped away at the issue of providing state dollars to unregulated, uncredited private schools, it did not go as far as some legislators, leaders, legislative leadership wanted. There were, there were several bills that, not several, there were probably a half dozen bills that were generated on both the Senate and House side that would have, would have done exactly that. And I, I refuse to call them anything other than voucher bills. Early childhood funding, while funding for early childhood programs was not specifically addressed, an element of Senate Bill 113 created an early childhood task force. And I'll just briefly mention, and I don't know if they've gotten the date for the meeting that will be held here in U S D 501. It's in, I believe. Anyway, that, that, there are a series of meetings across the state. So we're really trying to encourage individuals. And if you can encourage your friends to also come to this, it's going to be an important meeting. It's going to help develop a strategy for early childhood education. Twenty ninth? Twenty ninth. At 1:00 P. M. And that's at Bishop Education Center, at Bishop Education Center. Long-term sustained commitment for funding of capers. Again, they didn't cut it, so we could consider that a, a gain. They did, they made the payments they were supposed to. They also included a small amount for, for this coming year. The major point of interest with capers was a thing called E S G. And for those of you that have followed that, it stands for environmental social governance. And what they were looking for, some were looking for in the legislature were those companies that in, in their mission would include issues of, of environmental social or, or how they govern those issues. And that was distasteful for some in the legislature. But that, that was, that was included. Fully fund special education, that definitely was, was, it was not done. They increased funding by 7.5 million for this next fiscal year. They did not, a couple of things they didn't do. One, they did, well, everything was held hostage to, and I'll go back to the voucher issue. Almost every issue that needed to be addressed by the legislature was, was held hostage by, by vouchers. They did not approve the 72 million, which was recommended by the governor. That bill will be held over for next year. There are some, and I've, I've tried to pin some people down on this and have not been able to. Those were going to use one time ARPA funds. 72 million would, they'd use those funds, which means the next year, unless you generate another 72 million, you don't have those. And part of the congressional budget bill was that unused ARPA funds were to be clawed back. And I've tried to get the question answered as to if that 72 million of unspent funds would be included in those dollars that were clawed back. Next one, ensuring equitable and adequate funding for school district capital costs. No measures, no measures were introduced or hearings held on, on those items. Suitable financing, again, go back to Senate Bill 1, House substitute for Senate Bill 113. The budget requests were funded for 22, 23, 24, and 25. Continuation of the 20 mil statewide levy and the expansion of cost of living waiting and the extension of the high density at-risk waiting until July 21st. All, all of those were addressed. Any questions on the, on the finance issues that you have? And I'll come back. We'll have questions after I go through all this. Local, as far as teacher recruitment. And when you go through these, there's, there's a lot of important issues here. But unfortunately, they didn't get addressed because of either social issues rising to the forefront in the legislature or the voucher issue rising in the legislature. Alternative methods for obtaining professional licensure, Senate Bill 66 was passed, which provides that other teaching licenses from other compact member states. And those, I don't know what other states are members of that compact. You can, those certificates can be recognized in Kansas. Establishing a financial, statewide financial incentives to encourage teachers to both enter and stay in the workforce. Again, not addressed. Encourage Grow Your Own programs, again, not, not introduced or, or hearings held. Development of relationships among local teachers, students, families. This was, this was a very bright, I believe, point, not that the issue passed the legislature, but the governor vetoed and they could, they could not override or veto in the House. So that basically, that was one of the other issues that other things were tied into. So it was nice to get rid of that issue about three quarters of the way through the session. Had the, had the title of the Parents' Bill of Rights. Improving teacher recruitment. Again, the, the House sustained the governor's veto of 2236, as I mentioned earlier. That also would have, it has an impact on, on teachers. It has an impact on administrations. Has an impact on what you do as, as a board. And special ed is the final one that I'll take a look at. And that's, and I, I, I have to say this. They had the opportunity, there was, there was a bill, a resolution that was introduced in, in the House that did nothing more than ask Congress to step up to the plate and fund what they want, fund the, fund the costs that they've always said will fund. They couldn't pass that resolution. Nothing more. It doesn't cost them a cent, well, except for the paper that they might have to use to print it on. But they couldn't pass that. House Bill 24, 2048, I touched on earlier. And as I mentioned, the big question is, is will they use those 72 million? That's, that's $72 million that they were talking about using this year and will it be available? And if it is available, then what do you do to fill the hole of next year? It's one-time dollars. Establishing financial incentives to recruit special education and related professional services. Again, no measures were introduced, no hearings were held. President Bowley, do you want to have questions now? Or I've got a few other legislative issues that I'm going to mention, or do you want to have me do those and then have questions?
I believe we'd like for you to complete your report and then we'll come back with our questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. The next one is, and these were legislative issues that we were not involved with. And Senate Bill, Senate substitute for 2138, that is a bill that deals with separate accommodations, overnight accommodations for students for each biological sex during school district sponsored travel. That's an issue you're going to have to address. My understanding is you, you might have some of those policies already on the books. It, it's probably a time that you're going to have to go back and tweak them. Another one was Senate Bill 13, 113, House sub Senate Bill 113. The legislature feels that you, as school board members, might need to be compensated. So it gives, it says that it allows districts to pay school board members. I might be speaking out of turn, but I'm not sure any of you ran for this board so that you could be paid. And that's, this, when that bill was heard, there were a lot of school board members who were up there. Said that, that wasn't why we, that wasn't why we ran for school board. We ran for school board to, to help children and to, and to improve education. And the other one that Senate Bill, as, as you're figuring this out, the other issue that House Bill, House substitute for Senate Bill 113 included is that should you decide to close a school building in the future, the legislature has first right of refusal to buy that building. There are some questions as to what the reasoning was, and this all came about there. And I can't remember the districts. There was two districts, or one district that was selling buildings. They, they were in multiple communities, rural Kansas, multiple, multiple communities. And the question came up that, oh, if, if you, if you're getting rid of your building, we can take that and we can use it for one of our voucher programs. So I think that's where that issue kind of percolated from. The actions, and I mentioned this earlier, that the governor really helped a lot of small rural districts that don't have large budgets when she vetoed the, the item that would change the, the count date. And then I mentioned earlier, the House did not, or I mean, the legislature did not even consider the resolution 5004 that would have simply, just simply asked Congress to step up the plate and, and pay or fund the excess costs that they've said for many, many years. Those are the, those are the legislative issues. I want to just mention earlier because I know the, the day that I was introduced or the evening I was introduced, Superintendent Anderson also mentioned a couple of issues with State Department of Education. I just want to brief you on where those are. First one, the high school graduate issue, the students that go into the military is still in the works. I've had a meeting with, with Dr. Proctor at the State Department. He, he believes it's also an issue. He mentioned to me that things may move pretty slowly. So I talked to Dr. Kip this evening and we're going to continue our work on it during the summer. The other one was that many in the legislature commended U S D 501. I don't know if, if you heard, there were on the, where you had the new Ukrainian families move into the district and we're assisting them in many ways. As, as you all know, originally, they were going to be required to take the state assessments. And visiting with State Department, we got them to say, well, they don't have to take the reading language arts part of the program, but they still have to take math and science. And as far as I know, I believe that's still required reading. So we're going to continue working on that issue. But anyway, they, the legislature did recognize the, the work that was done by 501. I don't want to make some observations, general observations. Legislature expects lobbyists to be there, communicate with them, to let them know what needs to be done. They, they expect teachers, they expect school administrators, everybody. They, they expect school board members, sometimes yes, they, they expect you. And that, it's, it's all good. It needs to be done. It's going to be more important in the future than, in the future than it ever has been to involve parents in that process of, of calling their legislators and saying, you know, this, this needs to be done, or I want to give you my thoughts on that. It is not going to change. And as I said, with vouchers, that issue is going to become more and more prevalent. More and more bills are going to be introduced. And so it's going to be, it's going to be crucial that parents are involved in that process. And the public, I mean, the, the public and especially policymakers need to be made aware of what's going on in schools across the state. I had the opportunity during this past six months to visit two schools that were shining stars. One is special ed and one in, well, T-Calc as far as, as other programs to, to help individuals in the workforce. And legislators and really the general public really needs to know about those. It's, they're shining stars and they're shining stars across the state. You know it as well as I do. But Topeka has some, and, and I believe it's, it's crucial that, that legislators especially from this area, and whether it be through the principal for a day or whatever, that, and I believe that was in visiting with Superintendent Anderson, that was very successful last year. But those types of programs really help when legislators are sitting in the seat deciding whether they're going to push red or green. And finally, all of us need to be involved in correcting the false dialogue on public education. I was, in, for the meeting, I was talking to Dr. Kip and I told him I became so tired of hearing legislators talk about what a poor job schools did with pandemic and we're reaping all of those. It, it was, it's, schools were told on a Friday that you aren't meeting. And it's, it's almost like designing a plane while you're flying. And schools did a tremendous job, not just Topeka, all across the state. I mean, you had one day you were there, the next day, I mean, the next school day, you're teaching some, with some unique method that teachers haven't been trained in. So I think the public, and it goes back to that first thing I said, public, teachers, parents need to be involved in telling legislators, this is what's going on. Because otherwise, they only hear from organizations that really are, are not fans of public schools and see the budget for public education in Kansas as being something they would like to try to get a hold of. I mean, if, if, if you look at it from a true business sense, you go where the money is. The, the, the projects or, uh, whatever you want to produce, you go to where the money is. And when you have the, the fund for public education sitting at, uh, somewhere five, six, six billion, it encourages a lot of folks to say, well, how can we get our hands on that? So it's, it's only going to become worse. With that, that was kind of, I, I hate to end with bad news, but, um, I hope that was, I, I hope you get what I, what I'm talking about and what I'm feeling. So, President Bowley?
Thank you for that report. We appreciate your, all your efforts this last year. Do I have any, uh, questions from the board? Yes, Dr. Schumacher?
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. I would say, uh, first a comment that I do, I know with some of your work with my wife through DCAC and trying to help other ways to encourage parents to advocate, and so I know that is very much appreciated. Kind of like, you know, I went to KU, so I'm a college basketball fan, and the day after the national championship, they have the way too early top twenty-five for the next year. And you've already alluded a little bit, like, like in the future, like vouchers will, but were there other things that you anticipate as something that will definitely be addressed that, you know, next year, like looking forward?
The, the social issues, social gender issues, um, ones that they didn't get passed this year are not going away. House and Senate leadership has not changed.
So it'll be Groundhog Day?
Or as lobbyists would say, it's, what is it where you just have the hammer?
Uh, whack-a-mole.
Whack-a-mole, yes.
Any other questions down the board? I appreciate the report that we got. I do know that maybe as a district, we could be thinking about our PTO parents, um, giving our PTOs maybe that ability to plan around contacting during legislative session. Doing a little bit more about that, maybe as board members, we can, um, go to the book, the PTO meetings at the beginning of the year and talk to them about that importance. If that would, uh, be helpful. Would you all be willing to do something like that to? Uh, and also probably have to do some education on how you contact them and when you contact them and, and set up a system for that as well. Because most people don't do that. Um, Ms. Whitman, I have a question for you. He brought up the, uh, situation of board pay. Is that something that we need to put on our agenda, agenda as a discussion item? Or do we need to take care of that legally since that has been brought down by the state?
Madam Chair, the statute in one thirteen, section eight, about three lines, uh, changed the law. The law used to be board members shall not be compensated for their, their duties. Uh, it basically now says board members may be. So it's permissive legislation. Uh, most districts, uh, from the information I've gathered in talking, um, uh, with, uh, other, other attorneys, school attorneys, is that most boards are waiting to see what everybody else does for the very same reasons that Mr. Edwards, uh, they, they see serving on a board of education as public service. Uh, there's concerns that if they get paid, uh, that it may encourage people to run for the wrong reasons. It certainly is something that can be discussed by the board, uh, at any, uh, future agenda uh, or in the Board Policy Committee, uh, if there is interest in pursuing that.
So, uh, board members, I would like for you to give that some thought. And if it's something you want on the agenda, it's one of you can contact the Vice President or myself to, uh, have that as an agenda item. Or we can bypass it altogether. I just want to make sure that we stay in line with the state. If we have to discuss it, that we do that. If we don't have to, since there's a may in the, the word may in the, um, we don't even have to discuss it. So I will leave that up to the board to decide what you want to do with that. Um, one of the things that I'm hoping that you're going to come back for us next year and, uh, help us out again. One of the things that I had concerned about that I wanted to talk about was, um, two things, actually. If you would be able to help us get in contact with the legislators that you think would be, uh, should come and visit our schools. Because I think if we contact them and work with them early in the year before the session starts, that's when they're probably more willing to come and see our district, uh, see what's going on in special education, see what's really going on, not what happened maybe when they went to school. And that maybe you could help direct us in getting more legislators, not just from our own district, which are more public school friendly, I think, than some, but from Western Kansas, you know, whoever would like to come and see what's actually happening in education. That maybe if that would be something approved by Dr. Anderson, that we could really help them understand what's happening in our school buildings, that the funding is not being wasted in any way. And, and the need for special education funding. So if that's something that Dr. Anderson might be interested in, I would leave that up to the two of you to address that, but I'm sure that we love showing off Topeka Public Schools. Yeah, a lot of good things happening, so it's very exciting when people go, we did not know this was happening here, so. My second thing is, um, Topeka Public Schools is really highly affected by TIFs in the city of Topeka. And it affects our funding. And we were told by the city, we probably have to do something around that legislatively. And so maybe that's something that we can put on our plate next year to talk about. Um, every TIF project in the city takes away funding from, from public education, and we want the growth in the city, we are not against that, but maybe we can be, you know, public education taxes can be excluded from that as they keep adding those on. So, um, our expert in that area is Mr. Robbins, not me, but Mr. Robbins. And so maybe that's something we can kind of strategize around and, and try to find ways to. Uh, our outside districts don't, don't have to, to be concerned about this, it's really an inner city uh, situation. So, those are my two things.
If, if I may, I'd, I'd like, um, I'd comment on the, well, both of them. I'd be more than happy to help however I can and, and in getting legislators in. And when I worked for the Kansas Chamber and was dealing with business people, uh, we'd often get the statements that schools are overfunded, they're, you know, and and I think, not I think, and this is one thing I stressed when I was there, is that not only you show them your best and your brightest, but you also show them the realities of public education and the challenges that, that you have within, within your buildings. And I go back to something you said, we all think about public education as when we were sitting in a desk. And, and having the opportunity to go into the sped classrooms, I mean, never had a sped classroom when I was going to school. And so, I mean, I think those are things that, even though that is a very bright star within Topeka USD five oh one, the programs that you have, I think it's, it's also very important that you show them the challenges that you face within public education. So, and as, as far as TIF, um, yes, I think that, and there, there should be, there should be dialogue uh, between, um, all of the taxing authorities uh, in a, in a district, when you start talking about, well, we're going to abate taxes, or we're going to use, use some other formula than we use in the past, so.
Yeah, that conversation is definitely getting started. Mr. Robbins has been guiding us through that, and it's, it's very helpful. I think the city didn't understand the challenges back, you know, around that, and we certainly don't want to impede any growth in the city of Topeka, we're very excited about it, but we also want to be taken into account during that time, so. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions from the board that you're thinking? I think we're good.
Thank you.
You did such a nice job, we don't even really have any questions.
It, it has been a true joy, uh, and I, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, um, my working relationship with Dr. Anderson and, and, uh, Mr. Robbins has been great, uh, the work that, uh, Dr. Kip and I were able to do uh, with, uh, some State Department issues was, uh, was also
Very exciting.
Enjoyed it, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Madam President. Mr. Edwards, would you be able to share your presentation with, with the board? The, the, what was on screen that, that you
Sure.
Went through? I think that would be a, a fantastic resource.
We just didn't have it attached tonight, so we were just following along with the screen, so that'd be, that'd be great.
I will, I will include the notes, because the only thing that I gave, uh, uh, to the administration was the recap of the legislative issues that were in the priorities. I will also, I'll send, uh, Mr. Robbins a copy of my other, I'll send him a copy of everything, you can thought what you don't want.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks so much for everything that you do for us.
You're welcome.
So what, what was shared, and again, thank you so much, Mr. Edwards. Um, the, um, what you saw on the screen will be uploaded so that those that are looking at board docs can see what we just showed on the screen in their own space as well. So, as he sent that a little earlier, now that it's been presented, that'll be uploaded. Um, if it pleases the board, uh, as a next step, uh, and it sounds like I heard two for sure, um, for the PTOs, perhaps we can create some talking points for parents that when parents are calling their legislature, that they know when who to call. So if you're going to go talk to the PTO, you just give them the sheet to say, here's who you call, and here are some bulleted things that would really help Topeka Public Schools. That way, if all of you are splitting up different PTOs, or if you're going to wherever your child's school is, you'd be saying very similar language in that regard. And Mr. Edwards, I'm sure, would be willing to attend some of those. So that's one piece that we certainly could do, and we could ask each of our principals that at least the first DCAC, you know, the attendance falls off as the year goes along, but the very first one, when you first start the year, often all of the, you know, PTO presidents will show up to the very first one, just so that they know who's who, um, you know, um, who are the, what are the general things to know for the year? And that very first DCAC, we can encourage, if you'd like a legislative update, come to the first DCAC to all the PTO presidents. And give them the sheet at that time and share that your local, you know, your local board member may be visiting you, but here's something that you, PTO president, can take back or post on their websites or whatever. If that pleases the board, and I've seen a lot of head nods, we'll plan to do that as a next step, and then I'll work with Mr. Edwards, we'll work with Mr. Edwards on what that, uh, what those talking points can be. Um, we also do want to acknowledge, and we'll do this again, as Mr. Edwards felt like it was a good thing to do, the board, the legislators that came to principal for the day. And I, um, wasn't sure, it looks like Brenda Dietrich, Kirk Haskin, Fred Patton, Tobias um, Slingenspahn, and Virgil, uh, Wajil, those people came to principal for the day, and that's a, that's a large number. And this is the first time that we just kind of opened it up to all legislators. So we'll do that again as a strategy, um, early on, because it's before the session. It's just a chance to just literally be in the school for a couple hours. Um, and that really, uh, helped us have this working relationship. So we'll plan for that as well, as Mr. Edwards mentioned that. I think those are two, uh, key pieces, and then in terms of visits outside the principal for the day, uh, Mr. Edwards, we'll, we can work with him on just a open invitation. Um, principal for the day is a nice one because they get to stay for two hours, but just an open invitation to attend a program or school or whatever interests them or whatever they're concerned about. So we'll share that with the board at the draft, and perhaps in August, when we're kicking off, we can invite them to convocation, and we can invite them to attend at some point in the year. Does that sound okay, um, Madam President and to our board? Okay, so we'll plan accordingly.
Good knots, yeah.
All right, thank you. And again, thank you, Mr. Edwards. He is a delight to work with. And we're excited that he's continuing the work this summer and planning on continuing into next school year. So, thank you for the presentation and support.
Thank you. Okay, we are down to board member comments and committee reports. And I think if you have a committee report, give it first, and then you can give your comments. And we'll start down with Dr. Bumbrecht.
We had both the, uh, Finance Committee, Health Committee, and Wellness Subcommittee, but I'll let Mr. Yocum and, and Madam President do the budget, which we have enough money to cover the allotted expenses, although we could always use more. Nevertheless, the Health Committee, our insurance rates are stable for three years. We've just used one, we got two more years. But unless we do something, the rates are going to go up, not insignificantly. And therefore, the Wellness Committee was developed, and the Wellness Committee is going to take part in the Benefits Fair the first week in August. And we're going to try to support physician engagement. They should see, our employees should see a family practice or primary care physician once a year. And we're talking about incentives or disincentives. One of the disincentives, I think, would be to give them a T-shirt. We, we're talking about giving everybody T-shirts that attends. And it's what I need, another T-shirt. And there'd also be a drawing for prizes. Now, this benefits would discuss several options. There's a VERTA program, which actually has been shown nationally to improve type-two diabetes, get people off medications, cheaper medications, fewer complications. I'm not going to get into the smart shopper, you guys already know my opinion on that. Uh, but to involve more physician encounters. Uh, so many people don't see them, but our insurance rates are going to go up if we don't get some attention to our health care. There is also the Onside Wellness Office at Topeka High. They can do these wellness visits and give immunizations, and it counts as seeing your primary care physician. They see fifteen to twenty people a week. And they can serve as a primary care physician. And telemedicine's also available over the summertime when the office isn't open. And that's my report on the Wellness Committee. You'll be hit with it later.
Thank you, Dr. Bumbrecht. Dr. Schumacher?
So I'll speak to Technology Committee. We met, uh, since neither of us were at the last board meeting, Technology Committee met on the twenty-second of May, so before the previous, uh, board meeting. Uh, we discussed, um, digital equity as we do each meeting, um, and kind of progress with five oh one, but also the community with digital equity. We discussed, um, synergy, um, and just the rollout of synergy um, for staff, and then also through online registration, and then the plan, uh, as far as integration with third-party software as well. Uh, and then we talked about the, uh, cybersecurity training that's rolled out. Um, uh, Mr. Gowan provided me about twenty, twenty-one, twenty-five percent of staff has completed their training as of the end of May. So, and they still have some time to do that. And then, um, we discussed the, um, interactive panels and, um, kind of the, the replacement of the, um, interactive boards as they are failing throughout the district, and kind of what professional development looks around that, especially with a staggered rollout, kind of, how, how do we make sure staff is prepared to use those? And then we also discussed the, uh, new content filter and classroom management software and system that the board recently approved. And, and then, can I, you want me to do my comments now, too? I just have one, uh, well, I guess one thing, the, um, this month is, um, so last, no, it was two weekends ago. this month is, so last, no, it was two weekends ago, was Wear Orange, the June second to June fourth for Gun Violence Prevention Month. And just as I did Walk with the Doc last month, this Saturday, Dr. Louie is doing Walk with the Doc. Dr. Louie is a great man that most of Topeka knows, I believe. He's probably performed surgery on most of Topeka. And if not, you definitely one of your relatives. But he will be doing Walk with the Doc on Saturday, talking about gun violence prevention, which definitely unfortunately affects us all. And so I encourage those that can attend to attend. It's at nine o'clock. Nine AM outside of Leah Rena at Washburn.
Thank you. Mr. Tatum.
So I'm going to give highlights on the Finance and Budget Committee meeting, which took place on June eighth. And we spent, we spent quite a bit of time in the committee meeting, kind of talking about some of the 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 processes fiscally that occur in that are really things that that we as as Board members want to be plugged into because it has to do with fiscal year 2023. We're coming to the end of that cycle and there were several things we talked about regarding payroll and fund transfers and and things like that, things that I I won't, I won't necessarily bore you with here. But I think some of the bigger takeaways that I really wanted to share had to do with the things that are coming up regarding fiscal year twenty-four. And of course, one of the, one of the the higher points that I think we talked about during that conversation was the Budget Workshop that KSDE does on an annual basis. And and for this year, the Budget Workshop is on June twenty-second. I I know I've been before. It's been a number of years since since I attended, but I I found it to be very valuable and so would like to kind of put a bug in in the rest of your ear if you're able to join. I think you do have to sign up on the KSDE website. June twenty-second is when it, I I think it's, I think it's just a one-day event. But if I can be there, I'm going to certainly try to to be there as well. So we talked about that. We also talked about, well, the fact of the matter is that a lot of our expenses, the things that that we support on a regular basis annually, generally speaking, these are all expenses that are increasing. It's not getting cheaper to live and to to prosper. It's certainly getting more expensive and a lot of the responsibilities that we have as a district are not getting any cheaper either. Our liability, insurance renewal, renewal, that's going to go up by about fifteen percent. Our transportation renewal is going to go up by fourteen percent. And the, there, there's something called the KSD Updates Foundation Aid. And that has to do with, that that's kind of assessed based upon student enrollment. And if our enrollment rates remain constant, then this reflects a five percent increase in foundation aid. If the enrollment were to remain stable, if it's not, if it does not remain stable, I think we're probably looking at more than a five percent increase. But those are, again, just kind of a higher level, two thousand-foot kind of perspective on some of the things that we talked about. Didn't want to get too in the weeds and and have everyone's eyes glaze over. But those are some of the things that I thought were pretty important to share from from that committee. And I, on a personal level, thank you again, Dr. Anderson and 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 administrators for the Father's Day gifts. I think that's that's incredible. Now I feel like we're 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 equal, we're on equal par with with the mothers from last, from last month. But thank, thank you so much for that. That that means a lot. And I also, I know she's probably going to talk about it, but also want to publicly say thank you to Mrs. Schmidt for this book that she's given all of us Board members called The Leader in Me. And I I know she's kind of eager to talk about it. So that's all I have.
Mrs. Schmidt.
All right.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Yeah, everybody did my report, so I'm I'm good to go there. I did give everybody a copy of The Leader in Me. It is written in partnership with Stephen Covey, who wrote The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. And this is a book that he wrote. Dr. Boenbrich, I kind of thought about you when somebody was talking to me about it, about building character and creating good citizens in our kids, right? You know, sometimes they're not getting that at home. And and I found out about this book. There is actually a district in Kansas, Wabunsee School District, and they are using it there. And so in talking to Dr. Anderson about it, she says, well, we have somebody within our district using it. And Mr. Dustin Dick is utilizing it at T-Calc. So they shared with me his his book, so I can just take a look at it. And I thought, everybody can read it and we can take a look, maybe discuss it later down the line, see if it's something that we think we can carry over in some of our other schools, you know, building character, teaching kids how to create goals. I think those are all part of, you know, a well-rounded education. So I just started it, so you have plenty of time to catch up.
Thank you. Mr. Menos.
And I think we don't have Policy Committee until next week. Is that right? Is that, my calendar shows Tuesday. Is that wrong? Monday, yeah, I don't know why it shows up. So Policy is until next week. Intergovernmental Council is not till September, August?
Right.
Yeah, so we're, we have a hiatus during this, during the summer as well as equity. So I I have a couple of months off in terms of committee meetings for a while, but I'll get back at it come school. Other than that, there's a number of different programs around Juneteenth, so be on the lookout all this week as well as I think culminating in this weekend. So look out for those. And yeah, and again, thank you for the Father's Day gifts. I appreciate it.
Thank you. My committees have been reported on as well. I had a couple of comments. I want to thank the district for having the listening tours this morning. And I didn't get to go to the one this afternoon, but I know the one this morning was very good. We had lots of good feedback from our community. So are we having more of those this summer?
Last year we did four, so we had four, but three today. And I believe there is one in July. Dr. Gray will remind me of that date in July.
Okay.
But
We'll keep our eye on it.
And that should conclude it because then administrators come back two weeks later.
I had the opportunity to visit summer school over at Jardine Elementary and and also middle school. They're using just about the whole building. I think it's just really large and it is just a delight to see the students being so engaged and so happy there and the teachers doing such a wonderful job there. Even they're smiling as they're doing that work. So it, everybody's having a good time over there. One of the things I wanted to do for my committee reports as I get here is I talked to Dr. Weisman. And as the Board President, I'm supposed to ask one of the Board members to be that third committee person. And I was hoping that Mrs. Schmidt might be that other third. Would you, okay, well, I guess I got an okay on that. I have three dates that she gave me that we can work around. We're actually just going to have one summer meeting and give her her ideas of the data that we want back. And then we will, she'll move forward with that. So I'll send you those dates. And thank you for being excited about doing that. I appreciate that. So now we got that committee built and we are in good shape and we'll move forward with with that. I just want to thank the summer work that's being done by our leadership to extend the school year and help our students continue to learn and learn in such fun ways. So do I have any other additions to our, yes? Mr. Tatum.
So thank you, Madam President. You talking about summer school reminded me. I wanted to see if it would, if if the Board would be receiving, I guess, maybe a a summarized report of how the enrichment camps have gone. Okay. I'm seeing a lot of heads nodding. That's awesome. I'm excited. I I I love these opportunities. And with this, with this year, I think there's been some ups and some downs, but really I'm looking forward to kind of understanding the nuances and and seeing what we can do to to improve upon the experience overall. So, yeah, it sounds like we'll hear that before long.
Yeah, the twenty-ninth, the next meeting, that's what'll be on the agenda because that'll be really the last summer school will have, extended school year would have concluded. And Ms. Wallace will give the overall update about credit recovery and some of the other things that are outside of what's happening at Jardine. And then the site coordinators will be coming. So you get a chance to meet who was running the site. They'll be speaking about the elementary in the middle. And I think you're, you have maybe two kiddos.
I have one, one this year, yes.
At the Summer Academy. So, yes, sir.
Yeah, if some of us would like to visit, how can we set that up? Because I don't want to arrive unannounced. I want to sort of mesh. But and Dr. Boenbrich, do you have any interest in in visit as well? I know you're a big proponent of sort of summer, you know, extended programs.
Dr. Mejia, so is really the best person to coordinate that. Ms. Wallace can as well. And and you can show up unannounced. I think we we really welcome that as well in terms of, I mean, it's it's so quick. You know, it starts at around eight o'clock. Am I right, Ms. Wallace? They're gone by twelve.
So, yes, kids arrive about eight. Breakfast is over at eight thirty. They are off to classes and they have lunch and are dismissed between twelve and twelve thirty. So it's a quick morning.
Right. And then remember, Pine Ridge does have a program as well, which is so important for families in the Pine Ridge community, you know, outside of Jardine for the preschool. And Shainer has a program as well for preschoolers who get their first introduction. So if you know where you want to go, we don't want to assume you want to go to the Jardine facilities. But if you know where you want to go and you just let Mrs. Dr. Mejia or Ms. Wallace know, they can make sure they have some uninterrupted time for you. But if you just show up unannounced, there's a site coordinator. That's a new structure that was put in place last year. So a site coordinator will be there and can take you and give you a quick walkthrough as well. Thank you for.
Thank you.
And we have a summer school at Quincy as well.
So it's Quincy and at Robinson and Chase. It's a Twenty-First Century Grant Program.
Nice. So we are addressing a lot of students and helping a lot of people in our community as well with that summer, what do I do with my kids? Struggle. So thank you all so much. Anything else to add to our meeting?
And the nice thing, I guess, what, seven years ago? Well, eight years ago, we had no summer school. Then we started with, what, a hundred students or like fifty students?
About a hundred or two hundred. It has just grown.
And now we have over a thousand. Mindset is your only barrier. So you can make something happen and be innovative. And the number of programs and the kinds of programs, cooking and arts, it's amazing to see. So we're excited to take anybody on a tour.
Okay, over the board. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, I move the meeting to be adjourned.
Do I have a second? I guess I don't need a second. We can.